Hey, it's about mental health. Thank God for the work of mental health professionals and pray for their compassion, patience, and sensitivity. Also pray, also pray God will equip them with the skills they need to help others. And that they will be filled with God's Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, giver of life and help, comfort and relief, relieve those challenged by serious chronic mental and emotional illness. Give your power to heal those who minister through their needs and that they may be strengthened in their weakness and have confidence in their loving care through Jesus Christ our Lord, amen. Linda, you want to start us out?
Sure. On April fourth, for Community and Economic Development, I approve the permit promotion of Elaine Malcolm Mackey to the position of project manager number one four one one to be effective April thirteenth, twenty twenty five at the rate of twenty six dollars and fifty six cents per hour, rate eleven, step three, with a one hundred eighty day probationary period. She's in here, so congratulations.
Linda, you're missing financial. Do you have them?
I have financials.
So on April second?
No, I don't have that.
That's fine. Do you have an extra?
Thank you.
Okey dokey. On April second, I approved appropriation transfer from the Board of Elections in the Special Election Fund to move money into their Medicare account. There's a thirty five dollar voucher from the commissioners to the Geogga County Township Association for travel expenses related to the quarterly dinner meeting and a certification of the Commissioners Air Force Construction Fund or money that will be transferred to help construct a new tea hanger.
Does that mean Amy is going to our township association today?
Yes.
All right.
Yep, I talked with her and she's excited to join us.
I'm excited for everyone to meet her there.
Okay, item number three. Commissioners' office request the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of March twentieth, twenty twenty five. So.
Second.
Commissioner Spillane. Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBor.
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Adrian Gordon, Commissioner's Office. Covering today's financials. Among the financials is a transfer from the General Fund to Public Assistance for our April through June twenty twenty five mandated chair. Among the encumbrances are then and now encumbrances from Aging to Mark Glassman Incorporated for twenty twenty four purchases from the Sheriff to UH Regional Hospitals for twenty twenty four inmate medical bills and from Water Resources, the Ohio Water Development Authority for the McFarland Waste Water Treatment Plant Improvements, debt admin expenses, all of which were not previously encumbered. There are travel encumbrances from Common Police Court to attend the twenty twenty five Ohio Magi- Ohio Association of Magistrates Spring Conference from Engineering to attend the County Engineers Association of Ohio Bridge Workers Supervisors and Engineers Conference from JFS to accompany a child on an out-of-state visitation and for the two days in May, every Step of Victory Conference from Probate Court to attend the twenty twenty five Ohio Bailiffs and Court Officers Association Spring Conference and from Water Resources to attend the County Sewer Engineers Association of Ohio Summer Conference. Among the vouchers is one hundred and four thousand, one hundred and five dollars from the Commissioner's Office to Ravenwood Mental Health Center for our second quarter youth center operations commitment, eighty eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty six dollars from the Engineers' Office to Tim Lally Chevrolet Incorporated for two twenty twenty five Chevy Silverado Inspector Trucks. Found out later that these were not replacement vehicles, they were additions to their, to the fleet. And then finally thirty one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars from maintenance to Cleveland ViCon Corp- Company to install motorized door openers in the Geogga County Office Building.
So those are the doors, like these doors, and then is it for, for elections as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead and get access.
It's expensive.
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the financials.
Second.
Commissioner Spillane.
Bye.
Hi.
Yes.
Adrian.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is, are the monthly statements from county finances. The first one is from the Auditor's Office. They're requesting the board accept, execute, and file the monthly statement of county finances filed by the county auditor for the months of October through December twenty twenty four and January and February of twenty twenty five pursuant to ORC three one nine point three five. And then I'll, you want to do the next one?
Yeah.
Uh, the next one is the Treasurer's Office is requesting the board accept, execute, and file the monthly statement of county finances filed by the county treasurer for the months of October through December twenty twenty four and January and February of twenty twenty five pursuant to ORC three one nine point three five.
I'll make a motion to approve five and six.
Second. Commissioner Spillane. Hi. Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBor.
Yes, thank you very much.
Good morning. Frankie Antonucci, ADP Board. I am here today to request that the board approve the standard resolution to allow the ADP Board to execute an agreement with Sharton Township to provide them ADP services. Specifically, we're looking at extending to them two phones. They, they were given notice that their copper phones are no longer supported, so. We're, they're looking to add to the, the VoIP system we use here, the MyTos.
I'll make a motion to approve seven.
Second.
Commissioner Spillane.
Hey.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBor.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Morning.
Morning. Shane Hjard, Engineers' Office. Item number eight. County Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution twenty five to S O six zero to order the realignment of Bainbridge Road at Washington Street and the traffic signalization in Auburn Township. Cover sheet of the plans was previously executed by the board on February eleventh, twenty twenty five. Further, this resolution sets the bid opening on Bid Express and through the County Engineers' Office for Friday, May second at ten oh five AM. Notice of the bid opening will be advertised on April tenth and April seventeenth and on the county website.
Second.
Commissioner Spillane.
Hi.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Yes. Thank you. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Jessica Bolt, Director, Geogga County Department on Aging. I'm here this morning with a request for three merit increases for staff. The first is for Sandy Strichko, transportation driver to the rate of seventeen ninety seven, moving up one step for the purpose of she's a newer driver with us. Has really stepped up. Not only are we getting wonderful comments about her from our clients, letters, but her supervisor had had to take some leave and she went right in saying, how can I help? How can I do more? Can I do some scheduling? Can I do some of his jobs? So that just is the kind of worker that we want, excellent employee. The next individual is Joshua Burton. He's our Chore and Home Safety Projects Coordinator. We're asking for a merit increase of one step to twenty four ninety eight per hour. He has served one thousand, four hundred and eleven Geogga County seniors through our Chore and Home Safety Program. Not only is he hands-on, but when a senior needs a ramp and it is beyond their budget, he is going out to our local rotaries. He is going out to our VFWs, working with JFS and trying to find the funds so that senior doesn't have to go without. And the last is Hannah Hines. She's our Recreation and Education Coordinator at our Middlefield Senior Center. We're asking for a one-step increase for her to be at twenty five sixty six an hour. And she has increased the census at our senior center. They're in the five hundreds. Over five hundred seniors are going to the Middlefield Senior Center and we were in the three hundreds last year. Her attitude is infectious, absolutely positive. She's been focusing on veterans programming and she is now a health and wellness instructor doing diabetes self-management and matter-of-balance classes.
Great, all approved, nine through eleven.
Second.
Commissioner Spillane.
Hi.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Yes, I'm so happy that you have a great staff around you.
I am so fortunate. They are, they're wonderful. They're wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elaine Malcolm Mackey, Community and Economic Development. I have number twelve.
What's your new title though?
Oh, program manager. I have number twelve and number thirteen on the agenda today. Number twelve is Community and Economic Development is requesting the board award the bid to Country Roofing LLC for the CDBG Project Chagrin Falls Park Community Center for a roof replacement in the amount of sixty four thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and fifty six cents as they represented the lowest and best bid.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spillane.
Thanks.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBor.
Yes.
And item number thirteen. We are requesting the board award the bid to Lindsay Construction and Design Incorporated for the CDBG Project Maple Leaf Community Residences. They are getting roof and window replacements on three homes in the amount of ninety eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty nine dollars and sixty five cents as they represented the lowest and best bid.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spillane.
Bye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Seems like you have a new look every week.
Yep. Um, how's our time?
No man bites.
It's nine thirty two.
Yeah.
Clean cut.
You gotta bring that, we're good.
All right.
He's got to look the part, all right.
Matt Soraki, Maintenance Department, Contract Coordinator. I have fourteen and fifteen today. Fourteen being the Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve and execute the agreement for professional surveying services with Getowski and Associates Incorporated to perform professional surveying services at various county locations per the director for a two-year period effective April eighth, two thousand twenty five in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
How, didn't we do this last week or was this a similar one last week or am I misremembering? No.
No. It was on the tentative agenda.
Okay, and then it got full.
Had been finalized with.
I got it. I was like, I swear I looked at these papers.
Yeah. We tried to make it happen, it didn't happen.
Okay, got it. I'll make a motion to approve.
Hold on a second then.
Commissioner Spillane.
Bye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBor.
Yes.
And then number fifteen, we're requesting the board approve and execute the contract agreement with Cable Communications Incorporated to install cameras at the Geogga County Office Building per the specifications to be effective April eighth, two thousand twenty five with all work to be completed within one hundred and eighty days in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand, nine hundred and fifty one dollars and sixty eight cents.
So the only question I have, are we sure we need five cameras on the east side of the building? Like what, how many cameras do we have on the other sides of the building?
That is an ADP question.
Okay.
Can I pull a front?
Okay, you're mad.
Okay, appreciate it.
Frankie Antonucci, ADP. Yeah, we have roughly, well, over a hundred total cameras and of that group, there's about thirty outside.
Okay.
That one east side did not get any. So we originally had six and then scaled it back to five to get full coverage.
Okay.
So in scaling back as far as we possibly could, the five covers all of the dark spots on that side of the building.
Okay. All right. Now, I mean, I was just curious. I know these cameras can really reach so far.
The problem is the angles on that side of the building and where it gets.
Okay.
There's some overlapping coverage, but that's to ensure that there's no dark spots with.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve fifteen.
Second.
Commissioner Spillane.
Bye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Yes.
I have it very much.
Yep.
The next two are gonna have to wait. They have to move to item number eighteen on the agenda.
It's nine forty five. We'll start our public hearing for the closed vacation of the right-of-way upon Sand Hill Trail T R dash zero seven five three in Monson Township.
Go ahead, I'll motion to waive the reading of the real notice.
Okay.
Commissioner Spillane.
Bye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBor.
Yes.
Okay. Who wants to swear anyone in?
Um. I didn't do it.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, who's gonna, or just you two are gonna testify today? Anyone else?
Um, or maybe.
There may be some other, a party or two in the audience. If, if there's anybody here who may be speaking with regards to the Sand Hill Trail road vacation. Mister Lee, are you, oh, hi. Is, is your wife here?
She's.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody else? Oh my gosh. So I guess if we can swear Mister Leon and Tracy as well.
Okay, very good. You guys raise your right hand. Do you swear to testify truthfully under penalty of perjury?
Thank you. Um, okay. As the, as the board is aware, Monson Township filed a petition for the vacation of Sand Hill Trail. Um, and the board passed a resolution indicating that the, that may be in the public convenience and welfare to vacate the road and of course scheduled a hearing and sent out the required notice to the, to the abutting property owners. Um, the county engineer issued a report and we'll have the engineer read read the report into evidence. But I just have a couple of quick questions for Ms. Selkowitz before, before you read the report in. Uh, if that's okay with the board?
Yep.
Okay. Um. Ms. Selkowitz, has Sand Hill Trail ever been constructed, improved, or maintained as a road?
No.
Okay. Has it been used in any way as a road?
No.
Okay. Um, are any utilities installed on, under, or over Sand Hill Trail?
Not to our knowledge.
Okay. Um, and i- is it your opinion that the road has been abandoned by Monson Township and not used for over twenty-one years?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any reason to believe that Sand Hill Trail will be used as a road anytime in the future?
No.
And Matthias Lee and Jessica Lee, are they the owners of the abutting parcels along Sand Hill Trail?
Yes.
Okay. Are they the, the only owners of abutting parcels along Sand Hill Trail?
Yes.
Um, and is Sand Hill Trail used to calculate the distribution of auto registration um, distribution fund monies?
No.
Okay. And are the Lees the only ones who would be directly benefited by the road vacation?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Um. Could you read your report into the record?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have updated copies for the board. If it's all right, may I approach?
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you.
You too, please.
Okay.
Tracy, you said that was updated.
It's a sort of food's correspondence between the Lees and the township.
Okay, I'm just gonna mark this one updated more.
Sure.
Okay.
History of Sand Hill Trail, Township Road zero seven five three. Sand Hill Pharma Estates, a subdivision of fifty-six point four seven eight acres. Effective December twenty first, nineteen seventy-nine. Sand Hill Pharma Estates was recorded in volume thirteen, pages sixty-eight through sixty-nine of the Geogga County Records of Plats per court order for case number eight zero M one five four in the Court of Common Pleas of Geogga County. Sand Hill Trail and Sandstone Drive may or may not have been dedicated. Neither Sand Hill Trail nor Sandstone Drive were ever physically constructed and have never been used as a public highway for a period greater than twenty-one years. Sandstone Drive was vacated on March seventeenth, two thousand fifteen. The vacation of Sand Hill Trail will vacate approximately one point nine eight one acres of land. Current events. Township trustee action. On Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, the Monson Township Board of Trustees passed Resolution number two zero two five dash zero three petitioning the Geogga County Board of Commissioners to vacate the easement upon all of Sand Hill Trail pursuant to section five 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 three point zero four five of the Ohio Revised Code. Per the resolution, whereas the Monson Township Board of Trustees desires to vacate its easement upon the portion of Sand Hill Trail that extends from Mayfield Road south along a nonexistent and never-built cul-de-sac drafted upon one tract of land composed of a series of parcels as follows. Parcel numbers two one dash one seven six three zero three, two one dash one seven six three zero four, two one dash one seven six three zero five, two one dash one seven six three zero six, hmm, two one dash one seven six three zero seven, two one dash one seven six three zero eight, two one dash one seven six three zero nine, two one dash one seven six three one zero, two one dash one seven six three one one, two one dash one seven six three one two, two one dash one seven six three one three, two one dash one seven six three one four, two one dash one seven six three one five, two one dash one seven six three one six, two one dash one seven six three one seven, two one dash one seven six three one eight, and two one dash one seven six three one nine containing approximately thirty-five acres of land. The location of the public right-of-way to be vacated is as followed. Sand Hill Trail, beginning at a point where the center line of Rock Haven Road, Township Road zero one zero six intersects with the center line of Mayfield Road, U S three twenty-two, then easterly alongside the center line of Mayfield Road, U S three twenty-two, approximately two thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine point seven zero feet to the point where the center line of said Mayfield Road, U S three twenty-two intersects, intersects with the center line of Sand Hill Trail. Then southerly along the center line of said Sand Hill Trail, sixty-six feet to the southerly right-of-way of Mayfield Road, U S three twenty-two and the principal point of beginning. Then southerly approximately one thousand, two hundred and fifty feet to the existing terminus of Sand Hill Trail. Auto registration funds. Sand Hill Trail is not used to calculate distributions of the auto registration distribution fund. Underlying fee. The section will release, cancel, rescind, and vacate the public right-of-way of said Sand Hill Trail as described above, allowing the portion of Sand Hill Trail to be transferred in fee to the adjoining landowner that fronts the parcel. Abutting property owners. All of the properties abutting the never-constructed Sand Hill Trail have the same property owner. Matthias A. and Jessica S. Lee own sublots one through seventeen. Permanent parcel numbers two one one seven six three zero three through two one one seven six three one nine of the Sand Hill Pharma Estates. There's a house constructed on sublot five, permanent parcel number two one one seven six three zero seven and outbuildings constructed on sublots three and four. Permanent parcel numbers two one one seven six three zero five and permanent parcel number two one one seven six three zero six respectively. Access to the house on sublet five is via a drive access one zero two six one Mayfield Road along the westerly property line of the Sand Hill Pharma Estates on Mayfield Road. The plat for Sand Hill Pharma Estates dedicated an additional thirty-six foot of right-of-way along the front edge on Mayfield Road for future widening. The Ohio Department of Transportation was notified of Monson Township's request for vacation on Friday, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Only the portion of the right-of-way which may or may not have been dedicated, excluding the thirty-six foot section of right-of-way that runs parallel with Mayfield Road, is being included in this vacation. All abutting property owners were notified and notice of the hearing was published in accordance with Ohio law. Intent. To vacate all of the public right-of-way of said Sand Hill Trail listed described above, do not extinguish the rights of ingress egress reserved under the law, if any, of the abutting property owners named herein and to remove public utilities' rights of ingress egress or easement rights within the vacated right-of-way limits resulting from a road vacation per state law. In conclusion, based on the above facts that have been carefully evaluated and that the proposed area to be vacated have no impacts on the traveling public, the community, the environment, or overall transportation network. The Office of the Geogga County Engineer believes the vacation requested is justified and is for the public convenience and necessity.
Thank you. And, and actually, that's traditionally what's done in road vacation hearings. We have the engineer into the news office, read the, the report into the record. Um, I, if it's okay with the board, I also have a couple of questions for Mister Lee. Um, Mister Lee, just to acknowledge you've been sworn in, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and was it, did you approach Monson Township and request that Sand Hill Trail be vacated?
We did.
Okay. And what, why was that, just out of curiosity?
It seems unnecessary.
Sure.
And, um, it'll be along our property. We want to put a little trail in so we can get around and we weren't sure whether we can cross that or we could put a trail across it.
Okay.
So, um, we wanted to remove that and then ultimately we want to recombine the lots.
Okay, so, um, so you're actively seeking to consolidate all of the parcels? Is that all seventeen parcels?
Yes, so I actually, I have a letter that I addressed to the Engineers' Office that states that as well.
Okay. Um, is that the?
This is as of yesterday.
Oh, as of yesterday?
Yes.
Oh, sure.
The, um, Monson Township Board recommended that I draft something like that up. And you also have a couple of extra copies in case you guys want them.
Okay, so you have engaged Mike Spelacy and Mike Douglas from Polaris Engineering and Surveying to begin the necessary work to consolidate and reconfigure the lots?
Yes.
Initial surveying fieldwork was completed as of last week, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, and you indicated in here, in a letter dated December thirtieth, we requested the Monson Township Board of Trustees initiate the necessary procedures to vacate Sand Hill Trail as outlined in ORC five 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 three oh four five. And this letter stated April seventh?
Yes.
Okay. Put this in the evidence folder. Um, and when will the, so when will the consolidation be completed?
So, I don't know what.
He wishes he knew that answer.
Yeah. So they haven't indicated?
Well, our understanding was that this hearing has to happen first and, um, I don't, I, I don't know. It, it sounds like there's a couple of like alignments between meetings that has to happen with like.
Sure. So regardless though, this meeting aside, how long is the consolidation expected for last year? The, the process, procedure?
I would, I would imagine less than ninety days, but that's.
Okay.
I really don't know, that's just.
And, and is your intent to consolidate those parcels into one parcel or how many parcels?
Where, it's too many to determine whether it's going to be two or four.
Um. Okay, so it's unknown and will all of the new consolidated parcels front on Mayfield Road?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a chance that the parcels, the new consolidated parcels may not front on Mayfield Road?
No. That's like, it's going to be at least two at most, or we're trying to figure out what makes sense.
Sure.
We have no intent of actually developing any of those parcels. We really liked the forest. It was unfortunately very impacted by the storm that we had last summer. And we're kind of waiting for all of this to be done before we can start clearing down trees. I mean, we really, we lost hundreds of trees last, last summer.
Um, your driveway access is currently on Mayfield Road, right?
Yes.
Is it one or two six one Mayfield Road?
One.
Okay. And are you gonna maintain that access? Will that continue with your?
Yeah.
Um. And I don't know if any of the board members have any questions for Mister Lee? Any questions? Okay. Mister Lee, do you have any questions of us? Or anything that you'd like to say?
Um.
And I'm, again, I'm the attorney for the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner.
I don't know. I, I, I think I've mentioned a lot of things that I was going to say is that we're, you know, trying to split us consolidate to get rid of the seventeen parcels that are now
Sure.
into either two or four lots. We have no intent of developing this land. We really enjoy that forest. Um, we just want to sort of simplify what was there and make sure that it is, you know, a proper set of parcels.
And understandably, with the vacation of, of Sand Hill Trail, that will result in, despite your efforts, that will result in some landlocked parcels. And generally, the board tries to avoid that. So, um, you know, that's, that may be a consideration for the board. Obviously, I can't speak for the board. But, um, because only two of those parcels, I think, right now, the two that are closest to Mayfield Road actually front on Mayfield Road.
Mm-hmm. It's. I guess I was under the impression that we had to, that it was a order of operations thing for removing the road before we can reconfigure the parcels, uh, which is, I guess, why we
Sure.
started that process first.
Sure. And, and I guess, again, I can't speak for the board, but, I mean, obviously, there's a couple of options here. One, to obviously vacate the road based on the testimony and the evidence that goes in today. Or to, to deny the vacation of the road, which would allow you to do your consolidation and then obviously reapply depending on the board's concerns.
I see.
I guess.
Fair.
Unless, do you see it any differently to you?
Um. I guess I wasn't, I wasn't aware that one could consolidate those parcels without removing the roads, without having to that land that ends up being in the middle of the lots essentially.
Sure.
And I, I guess I'm trying to avoid having to
And, and again.
Reconsolidate.
Sure.
Remove the road and then reconsolidate again.
Sure. And I'm just trying to get some information into the records so the board can make an informed decision. Um, any, any other questions anybody?
So what he's saying is, is that correct? And he can't consolidate those, those lots with that, with that?
Unfortunately, um, I don't, I don't represent any township, so I don't know what Monson, and I, I've never represented Monson, so I don't know what their practice is per se. Um, so I, and, and I don't know what other issues may arise as a result of any decision that the board may make depending on the specific facts and circumstances. And I, sorry, I know that's kind of.
Although, I mean, Monson is asking us to do this. I mean, they're, they're the requesting party. So I think if they wanted a different procedure, Monson would ask us in a different step, right?
Sure.
I mean, I, I did read the, um, relevant sections of the code, and this is a very bizarre, um, subset of the law, to say the least about these, uh.
I know, it's fun to try to reconcile all the applicable sections.
Yeah, I'm glad this isn't my area of expertise. I learned, I learned a little bit from that. Um, but I mean, it does seem like we're, we're following, you know, if we vacate this easement, we are following the law and it doesn't seem like there's, um, any pockets that should be putting money, taking money out, so.
Sure.
And as far as I read it.
Yep. And, um, just for purposes of clarification, it's my understanding that normally, um, well, you have two options. You either have a highway easement that is present, or you have a situation where the township owns the, the road in fee. And apparently, this is one of those situations. So, um, what that basically means is that the board would vacate their, I mean, they would, they would vacate their right-of-way, but we would probably do an, the additional step of a deed to transfer.
So that, all right, so that was one thing I was gonna ask. If, if the township actually owns this land? And they, they do own the land, is that correct?
And, um, I'm sure Tracy could speak to that, but that's my understanding.
Okay.
They do. And our office is currently working on the vacation plat and then the deeds, which would transfer each of those parcels back over to the adjacent sublot.
If, if the board decides to go that route.
Okay.
Because unfortunately, sometimes we don't know which way the board's gonna go, of course. So we try to prepare for any contingency.
Okay. I understand. Um, and so typically, how is that handled? So that the, the property, the adjacent property owner, um, becomes the owner and feels simple without any money.
To the center of the line.
Okay, to the center of the line, without any money exchanged to the township. Is that correct?
Oh.
Because, I mean, essentially, they're, they're, they're letting the township off the hook of having to maintain.
Correct.
So there's a benefit, I would assume, both ways.
And, and that's the thing, because, I mean, when it, when there is a road vacation, there, the, the acreage that, um, abuts of the road, that abuts the property line to the center of the road, accretes as a matter of law to the abutting property owner. In other words, it just transfers to them.
Yeah.
Um, so that is correct. Um, the, whatever roads vacated, the abutting property owners will, their acreage will increase.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure I understood. So I mean, it's somewhat of a, a windfall for the property owner, but in a way, it's a windfall for the township, too.
And again, as I indicated, there is the issue of, um, you know, I mean, technically, right now, um, the, we only have the two on Mayfield Road and we have, you know, the other parcels. So, you know, depending on, on the, you know, how the board feels about the evidence that's gone in today, I mean, obviously, they could, you know, make, make a decision.
Okay. Um, so is there, but I just see the hearing on the, um, agenda today. So are we able to make, uh, a motion after we get out of the hearing?
Um, you can close the hearing and, and make a motion. Um, we are waiting for the plat to be finished. So it may make, and it's up to you guys, but it, it may make sense for the board to close the hearing and then at their, you know, at your next session, next Tuesday.
Okay.
Then take action.
I understand.
All the interested parties are here. So they're, they're aware of what, you know, what the board will do.
Okay.
Depending on what you guys wanted to.
I understand. I don't, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I just want to note that the, um, last session, um, that we have as a board is April twenty-nine, before we reach that sixty-year deadline of.
Well, this is a request from the township and the landowner. And, uh, if we have something that would relieve any liabilities from the county.
Well.
I'm okay with.
And that's the thing, because it, and I agree with you, it is a little bit unusual. So I guess, um, you know, Mr., Mr., um, Lee, um, I guess, if, if the board does consider doing the, the vacation prior when you're consolidating the lots, would you be willing to agree that, you know, um, to waive any, any potential damages as a result of, um, of vacating the road prior to doing the consolidation? In other words, as a, because you have landlocked parcels?
Um, I don't fully understand what all those liabilities might be. I mean, the matter of fact, right now, is that they are already landlocked and we have to cross across the parcels that do abut Mayfield Road to get to the parcel that our house is on. Um, and that isn't changing. Um, so I, I don't, I don't know if I fully understand what other liabilities there, there may be.
Okay. And, and it's just the fact that if they vacate the road, that will formally create this situation? So, and, and if they rely on your representation, that you will immediately proceed to consolidate those parcels? Whereas the board could just deny the request to vacate and then obviously you have to consolidate and come back.
Mm-hmm. I mean, we are in the process of vacating. We would like this to be done as soon as possible. So this is something that is in motion right now.
Sure.
Um, so I, whatever, whatever we can do to try to bring this to a close, um, and finish the consolidation and everything, um, and the vacating of the road, I think, um, should be a bit of that.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't have any further questions. Should we close the hearing? Okay.
No further questions.
Anybody else? Ten, ten.
Public hearing is not closed. Get done this next week.
So you have, they have session, um, next Tuesday at nine-thirty?
Yeah.
So this would be an agenda. I am on the session next week. So if you, if you should choose to come back, um, next Tuesday at nine-thirty, um, the board may have a decision regarding the requests.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Nope.
Good.
Good.
Thank you. Sixteen. Maintenance.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
But you wish you talked a little bit faster.
Yeah. Just a few minutes faster.
You almost made it in there.
All right, Charles C. Catch Maintenance Department. Um, I have item number sixteen on the agenda. The Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve and execute the agreement for professional design services with Verdantis Architecture Incorporated to provide professional design and contract administration services related to upgrading the existing roof on the courthouse annexed two, thirty-one and two, thirty-seven Main Street buildings located in Charton in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars.
So what is your estimate for what the whole project is gonna cost? Or you kind of have to see what is going on with the roof first?
Probably, uh, uh, around ninety to a hundred thousand just to replace the roof.
Okay.
They have had some water intrusion over the past couple of years, so there may need to be some repair work. That's not included in that estimate right now until we do the design and see how much damage there is.
Also, what is going on with your scanner? Because every time you submit something, there's all these extra pages. They're testing me. Um, maybe talk to ADP about that. But I'll make a motion to approve, uh, number sixteen.
So.
Mr. Speller?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
What happened to your hair next? Did you have a hat on thirty seconds ago?
Probably, or my head, you know.
You were really scratching your head during that, uh, easement talk.
It was, maybe, that was it, so.
Planning, maybe.
Planning.
Oh, yeah.
Planning, commission, planning commission.
Planning, yes. It would have been a heated one.
Yeah.
Uh, Nick Morris Water Resources, uh, requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the First Amendment to the Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Program Grant Agreement between the State of Ohio, Department of Development, and Georgia County for the Equola Wastewater Treatment Plan Improvement Project Design and Engineering Grant, revising the expiration date. Uh, this is the final step. So basically, this is just by the time the final report, report was approved, it had to be in by December thirty-first. They approved it like January third. We've already received our reimbursement money, the final report, everything is. So this is just for them to fill their books on there.
I'll make a motion to approve seventeen.
So.
Hi.
Yes. Thank you. We don't have to.
I'm just gonna start screaming.
Credit cards.
Don't start screaming. We thought, you know, once we worked out really well. I anticipate a few more, just to give you the heads up. Uh, this resolution.
Are you serious?
I'm not kidding. I am dead serious. Um, well, as we have additional departments that are requesting to obtain credit cards and as the, um, process has been since we started, the changes are every time we're adding an employee, every time we're adding a credit card, if we're changing limits. So I know.
You know, they are toward you or, yeah.
Yes. So, uh, it's just, it, we have to work out the bums this year and that seems to be what we're doing. So this, uh, sixth amended resolution, twenty-five, oh, six, one, is just, um, adding, um, additional, uh, employees through the common pleas court just to add the magistrates, um, to be able to use them, um, as they're, they have a travel. Um, so that is number nineteen.
Is this something we can just have at county administrator?
I'm, that is something that we will have to look at, at in, um, for next year.
Okay, so that's.
Approve me to sign the forms.
I see.
Not to approve the actual use of the cards.
But not the.
Oh, because I've been signing the forms.
Okay. And so we can only do that, that organizational meeting?
Um, we can do an amended resolution. Um, I just, it's one of the things that Laura snuck out the door. So we just have to confirm which part that.
That might be a little more efficient than us having to read this paperwork every single.
Yes. So that is going, number six is, is to allow the additional, um, employees for.
Oh. So I'll, well, so should we do?
So then number.
Yeah. And twenty-one, too.
It is the, um, well, number twenty is the, um, president to execute the application for authorization to permit the use of those employees for the common pleas court. Um, number twenty-one, if you'd like to add and include, is the certification request. This is the quarterly certification request for veterans, um, service mission. They're pretty, pretty, basically, and other. So we do nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one together.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one.
So.
Mr. Speller?
Hi.
Yes.
I can do number twenty-two. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute change order number six, increasing the contract with Infinity Construction Company on the courthouse expansion project, GMP number two, for additional millwork, courtroom podiums, monitor brackets, intercom systems for interview rooms, TV drops, and electrical revision, exterior secure parking gate conduit and wall revisions at the security desk in the amount of fifty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. You recall, you approved this last week and it is pending ADP, you were here.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks, pending ADP approval of those elements in here that are uh, subject to that. And I've been in communication with Frank and we were RC's gone. Um, we've worked out which elements of that and there is a, um, an ADP board meeting scheduled for April twenty-eighth. So, uh, we will get those elements, uh, before that board at that time.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think if I was, if I was at this meeting, I probably would have quibbled about those changes to the, um, countertops or whatever that was gonna be marble or quartz. But, um, it was already approved, so I'll make a motion to, uh, approve twenty-two.
So good.
Mr. Speller?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Item number twenty-three pertains to the fact that we have the, uh, title bureau here in this building and they lease the space from us. And, uh, we were, it was time to renew that. And so, uh, I had talked with them a while ago and they sent us the addendum. So, uh, twenty-three and twenty-four are related to each other. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution number twenty-five, zero, six, two, authorizing addendum number two[1612.92] Authorizing addendum number two to the lease with the State of Ohio Department of Public Safety. For the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, Chardon Deputy Registrar Office. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute addendum number two. To the lease between the Georgia County Board of Commissioners. And the Ohio Department of Public Safety for the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, Chardon Deputy Registrar. For the period July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirty, twenty twenty-seven, for the lease of. Nineteen hundred seventy-five square feet of office space in the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars per year.
And who negotiated the rate? Was that you, Linda?
That already was done. Um, before I was involved at all. This is just. The next step. It was already set in the agreement.
That there would be like a step up of the price?
Correct.
Okay, I understand. I'll make a motion to approve twenty-three and twenty-four.
So.
Yes.
It does then hear about the increases of a sixteen dollars and forty-eight cents per square foot.
Okay, yeah, I saw that. I saw that the rate, because it went from sixteen to sixteen forty-eight, right? So I saw that the rate went up. I just assumed somebody.
It was part of, I think, the initial.
I got.
Number twenty-five, Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution number twenty-five zero six three. Authorizing the Airport Authority to construct a new T hangar at the Georgia County Airport. And to approve an appropriation of eight hundred thousand dollars from the general fund. To the Airport Construction Fund. For the purpose of contributing towards the construction and improvements at the airport. In accordance with ORC three oh up, three oh eight dot one seven. Now with this, we had prepared. A pretty simple straightforward resolution based on the resolution that you passed last year to give twenty thousand dollars. To the board. And then there were some revisions to that that were presented. So I don't know, Christie, did you bring two different versions? So I'm not quite sure how you want us to present those to you for your consideration. Were both of them sent to them ahead of time? Okay, so we had a simple version. We had a more complicated version that included some accountability measures. And I don't know that those were ever sent to the Airport Authority. For consideration. So do we want to read that aloud or how do you guys want to proceed?
I'm comfortable with the simple, what we agreed in twenty twenty-four.
How much money did you give in twenty twenty-four?
It was one point three. You know, it's been reduced down to eight hundred thousand.
But your resolution for was twenty.
Right, I understand. Yeah.
I mean, this is for significantly more money.
Right.
And I mean, when I asked last week in session, I mean, I asked the question, so we aren't doing an agreement. And Commissioner Devorek assured me that there would be language in the resolution to protect the taxpayer. So I think there should be, there should be language in the resolution that protects the taxpayer.
And that's the second version that that was prepared and you have seen.
So. Do you want to speak on this?
Well, I don't know. We didn't receive the document. How can we?
It's not a contract, though. It's a resolution.
I understand that, but I mean, there's language there that. I mean, just the courtesy of sending it to us just to say. When was it drafted?
Just in the last few days.
Okay, well, I mean, we had a draft board meeting last night. We would love to see it. I mean, we're, I mean, we're under the gun. We took bids yesterday, and if we don't get this approved next week, we lose funding.
Do you want to go ahead and read the resolution?
I received the resolution from Laura this morning. Um, back with the conditional resolution back from Laura this morning. With a one slight change, which just she just asked me to add an a date into. It that was sent to you. That was, and that was included in my emails all of you when I sent the conditional use resolution. Do you want me to read the conditional resolution and then you guys could decide which version would?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Resolution authorizing the Airport Authority to construct a new T hangar at the John County Airport. And to conditionally approve an appropriation of eight hundred thousand. From the general fund to the airport construction fund for the purpose of contributing toward the construction and improvements at the airport in accordance with ORC three oh eight point one seven. Whereas the John County Board of Commissioners. Formed the John County Airport Authority in resolution nine two dash one oh five in accordance with Ohio Vice Code Section three oh eight point oh three. Whereas ORC Section three oh eight point one seven. Permits a board of county commissioners of a county included within a regional airport authority to appropriate monies from the general fund of the county. If permitted in the resolution creating the airport authority. Whereas resolution nine two dash one oh five provided in part that the commissioners may in their direction provide financial support to the John County Airport Authority. Whereas the commissioners and the airport, or the commissioners and the authority entered an agreement entitled co-sponsorship and lease agreement between the John County Board of Commissioners. And the John County Airport Authority Board of Trustees dated March fifth, two thousand eighteen. And an addendum there to dated December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two collectively the agreement. That was the change. Whereas the authority is contractually obligated inter alia to repair and maintain the facilities of the John County Airport. Whereas the commissioners approved a conditional appropriation of eight hundred thousand from the general fund to the airport construction fund. Subject to the terms and conditions herein, which will be in addition to dependent upon receipt of a minimum of five hundred eighty-six thousand dollars of FAA infrastructure grant monies. By the commissioners and the authority, which grant monies will be used to fund the construction of a new T hangar at the John County Airport. Whereas the authority may request following the construction of the new T hangar to utilize remaining funds from the eight hundred thousand dollars appropriation. And hangar lease revenue towards other improvements at the airport. Whereas no county funds shall be dispersed under this resolution unless prior to dispersment, the authority certifies subject to the commissioners approval. The following to ensure accountability and transparency. One, the authority shall provide quarterly reporting to the commissioners for three years following completion of the T hangar. Including copies of leases and other relevant documents, occupancy rates, rental income, and operational costs. Two, the authority affirms that it has complied and will continue to comply with all of the terms of the agreement. Three, the authority shall not authorize any salary increase. For authority staff that exceeds the annual percentage increase authorized by the commissioners unless explicitly approved by the commissioners. Four, these funds shall become a loan with a twenty-year term and an interest rate of two percent compounded annually. If any of these conditions are violated, determination of non-compliance shall rest with the commissioners in a sole reasonable discretion. Based on documentation provided by the authority or other relevant evidence. And five, in the event of material misrepresentation, misuse of funds, fraud, or any. Indicia of non-compliance as determined by the commissioners in their sole discretion, the commissioners may require immediate repayment of all funds dispersed. Under this resolution with interest accruing from the date of dispersment. Now therefore be resolved that the John County Board of Commissioners authorize the Airport Authority to construct a new T hangar at the John County Airport. And conditionally approve an appropriation of eight hundred thousand dollars. From the general fund to the airport construction fund for the purpose of contributing towards the construction and improvement. At the airport in accordance with ORC three oh eight point one seven. Yet further resolved that this resolution becomes part of the permanent record of the board of county commissioners.
I respond to that? Sure, there's several items in there that we did not understand or know were coming. The payback clause, penalty clause, quarterly reports. That stuff that we didn't expect. And we're up against the wall. If this doesn't get done next week, we're out of money. The county loses money. We have someone.
Chip, was there was there some comment relative to salary? I thought I heard that was kind of a speed reading exercise there.
Well, I'm a lot speed reading, but it was a lot. Number three was the authority shall not authorize any salary increase for authority staff that exceeds the annual percentage increase authorized by the commissioners. Unless explicitly approved by the commissioners.
What does that have to do?
Yeah, where'd that come from?
Well, you know, the issue seems to be that you want to increase your revenue, right? Is that is that the justification for this hangar project?
Yes.
Okay, so, you know, one way to get to have better cash flow would be to increase revenue. Of course, I think you should increase your hangar rents. That would not cause taxpayers anything, and that would also increase your revenue. But, you know, your solution is to build this hangar so you have more revenue. Um, but in another problem, of course, is that your costs are exceeding because due to extreme sort of. Increases in salary expenses over over three years. I think it went up fifty-one percent. So this is a way to cap your costs a little.
This one in the airport. The Airport Authority or the County Commissioners?
Well, we're giving you money. I mean, are you going to be a choosy beggar? Are you going to take the money?
A choosy beggar.
Yeah.
Uh, forgive me for, give me a second to. To think about that. That's rude. That is very rude. You're talking to a bunch of volunteers that try and run an airport that's in the black.
You're asking.
And you called us rude?
You're asking, you're asking for money.
You're right. You're right.
And you've not filed the process to ask for money that everyone else that comes before us does.
Can I go through? Last week. You you said that there was no documentation submitted for this project. Can I go through the history of this project? Two thousand thirteen, our master plan was was approved with our airport airport layout plan. That doctor, those documents were submitted again last week. Mr. Rick, did you receive them?
A two thousand thirteen plan?
Correct.
I don't, it's not that I.
Package last week?
I received, um, let me see, I got I got this, which was, this is dated December twenty twenty-four.
We we asked that our consultant sent you a package.
I had, I had blue. Of four sets that were received on Friday.
Alright.
So, um, blue, but they were blueprints, right?
That is our airport layout planning. So can I finish the history of this?
I mean, and then I have this. I don't have anything. You said it was dated twenty thirteen. I don't have anything dated thirteen.
That's what we submit last week. That's what we submitted to you last week, and it's been in this office since two thousand thirteen because you are co-sponsors of the airport. This project has been on our books since then. Three or four years ago, the federal government started the bipartisan infrastructure law. Where the FAA told us that we could fund hangers with this funding, which we couldn't use FA money for hangers before that. We waited three years. It's informed the county commissioners that we would like to use that money with some help from the commissioners to build second T hangar. On July eighteenth to twenty-four, we sent a letter to the county requesting funding, explaining the FAA, showing what the FAA would approve for us. After that meet, that letter, we had meetings with every county commissioner. The county administrator Adrian was involved with a couple of phone calls, talking about the funding, how much budgets. Estimates and everything. The county commissioner's office knew about this project. In September, we met with Jerry. And a month later, the bid specs and plans for this project were reviewed and approved by the commissioner's office. You knew about this project in September. Jerry drafted an agreement. That was. Submitted to us. We reviewed it, our attorney reviewed it, went back to the county commissioners of how the funding would work. During that process. We have been asking for for capital improvement funding for five years, ten years to fix roofs, fix the UH living quarters, fix doors. It was decided that we would include this into one big. Project where the commissioners would fund the one point three three. We build our building. When the FAA money come in, came in, we would do our improvements, capital improvements to the county's property. On December seventeenth, the commissioners approved one point three three million dollars. Unanimous vote. And an agreement was reviewed. But for some reason, it never got off the ground. It got stalled somewhere in the in the world. On February fourth, commissioners voted not to fund. To rescind the one point three three, even though we had put in motion engineering, architecture. Grant approvals, the whole, all the paperwork.
We rescinded the motion, just to be clear.
You took the money back.
There was no money. We rescinded the motion.
The money was allocated to us. We met, we moved, we moved forward based upon that action. We have a letter that says so. On the sixth of February, we met with Jim, Mr. Devorek. And we worked out a way to fund or continue funding to build a T hangar. At that time, we tossed around the amounts. Jim came up with the eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, which that coupled with the federal funding, we would fund. Our project. There was a new agreement drafted on February seventh. I believe Linda did that. That was sent to us. It was back to you the next day. And that agreement has never been added on. That agreement is in. The county, at the commissioner's office.
Well, to the prosecutor.
We never got it back from the prosecutor.
But that's not our fault.
Kind of not our fault either.
Why not?
Because the prosecutor had the agreement and did not return it. I can't, I could ping him once a week and then I get it back or I don't get it back. They never got it back.
It's a one-page document. A one-page document that wasn't agreed to. There wasn't wasn't reviewed, excuse me. On February thirteenth, we met with you and Linda. We talked about everything. We submitted information about the project. We talked about the airport. We gave you overall big picture macro information.
You didn't give me any, you didn't give me any enough information about the project at that time. We had a macro discussion about the airport, but.
There was discussion about the T hangar project. On the fourteenth. Uh, we sent the agreement back to the county. Uh, they went back to the prosecutor on that date. And we were told on the twenty-sixth of February that the prosecutor's review was almost done. It still has not been done. On March seventy-seventh. We sent copies of all plans, specs. Grant applications, everything to the county.
And that's true. And last week I said I didn't remember receiving it. I apologize.
You called us on a cart for never submitting anything. You said you never received anything. You said you never received anything. You said, that said.
I said, I didn't remember receiving it and I apologize.
Okay, alright, well, that's, I mean. On the tenth, we sent more grant information. So I've spent a couple hours, went back through my emails. I have over fifty emails talking about this project for the last year, with everybody's. All the people I've mentioned listed in some fashion in those discussions to say that we never submitted anything to the county. Last week on April first, to say that is not true.
Okay, Mr.
Not true.
Ms. Blair, can you talk generally, when someone puts something before us to approve, how does that process typically work? Do you dig through your emails to see two months ago you received something from somebody, or generally do they make the request? For whatever they want and they include as an attachment, whatever documents they want the commissioners to review? So could you talk about that briefly?
The request process is one week prior to the requested meeting. The request for action needs to be submitted with all documentation. Um, in support of the project to the board for review. The tentative agenda is created based on those requests. Um, if they are sent electronically, they are required to be backed up with a hard copy to the office. For the simple fact that, as we know, I have a lot of paper in my office. Uh, we do have a designated session area. However, if for some reason I am not here. And somebody has to fill in for the clerk, they are not going to go into my email. And go looking for requests for action because they don't have access to my email. Obviously, that's a, that's a ADP thing that, you know, not everybody has access to everybody else's email. That's just how it goes. So if a request is sent to me in an email. It. Has to be backed up with hard copy to follow up, to make sure that it is logged. And it is in the proper. Process for session. To clarify. The March seventh email that you are referencing. Was sent specifically to Mr. Devorek and to Ms. Berhenny. It did not go to anybody else in our office. So when I made the comment that I personally did not receive documentation regarding the T hangar project, I was correct. Mr. Blamer sent it while we were in session. To me and said that this was sent on March seventh, and I went down through it and I said, yes, it was sent to Mr. Devorek and Ms. Berhenny. It was not sent to me. It was not sent to the other two commissioners. If I do not receive an email, I can't forward it onto the board.
We've been told, we've been told multiple times by the county commissioners that we are to communicate with the county administrator. Back when Jerry was here and also with Linda as far as information. That's what we've been told.
I mean, if you want something on the agenda, it needs to go through Ms. Blair. That's how it works for every other department that wants money.
The comment, the count all that. The comment last week was that you received no information.
I, that's because I I really hadn't received anything.
Okay, are you a CEO of a company?
Am I a what?
A CEO of a company. Do you have staff? If someone tells one of your staff something. And then you can you go say, well, I don't know about that?
I think we're getting off track here.
No, we're not. I'm taking this personally because you accused us of not doing anything. It's not true.
Respectful for someone that is asking us for money that we don't contractually owe you.
Was there anything that she read of those conditions that were added, things that you don't think you guys could meet?
At this, at this point, for us not to have time to sit down and read it.
I I agree with you. We got it this morning.
Well, yeah, but again, the prosecutor.
I hadn't even seen.
I mean, this, this has been a week for a one-page document. And and expect us to look at and to have Christie read it and expect us to accept it. We're probably going to have to. But that's just disrespecting. We wouldn't expect that if you folks, if you require a seven-day notice to have something read and approved.
I just received it yesterday.
And you're, you're not approving it. It's a resolution. We are the ones that need to approve it.
It affects us.
It.
It affects us. It affects.
When you get money from the from the FAA, you have terms and conditions that you have to play. I have no doubt that probably those terms are not the stick, right? And and you sign it because you want the money. And we're, all we put in this was essentially boilerplate. Into this resolution that puts some protection on taxpayers, and I don't understand why you are unwilling to do that.
Because you, one of the comments was that you're respecting what we can do with our employees. Well, how, I mean, how we we can reward our employees.
Uh, you've you've rewarded your employees handsomely.
Because they've done a great job.
All the requirement is, is that you come before the commissioners and that if you want to go before what we approve as a blanket. Increase for our staff, you need to ask permission for. I mean, in the contract, you're supposed to ask before you apply for a grant. I I don't think you're doing that right now, are you? Did you, did you ask permission to apply for this?
The pre-application for this T hangar did not go through public session. It was not approved in public session. And that September was the parallel taxiway stuff. It was not related to the T hangers because I went back and looked just for clarification.
Okay.
Step by step. This council has delayed this project in a very, very artful fashion. This latest surprise is a prosecutor who will not respond to a one-page. Agreement for months. All of a sudden, at the eleven fifteen nine, I'm not letting you.
I've never even seen that one.
I'm not letting you, but it is such an artful way to delay a project. You have my total respect. For for your artful delay of this, of this, these, these communications. Let's go through the the points that just got added at the eleventh hour. Let's review them right now. No, read them off to us since we don't have a.
Maybe not quite so fast.
So before we go even at the, at that point, I was, I, my conversation with Linda yesterday was that there were supposed to be two resolutions.
There's a very simple.
So I'd like to read the simple one too, if we could, if we could read that one.
Um, this resolution for clarification, I took language from. The resolution that was done in twenty-three that approved the twenty thousand dollar appropriation to the Airport Authority. And I took language from the prosecutor's office. That was done for the agricultural society's appropriation for the new poultry barn and sale barn. And I melded that together and sent it to the board for comments. And that's how I. And that's how I got the conditions, um, resolution.
So you wrote the terms and conditions?
I did not write the terms and conditions. I received that back from a board member. And then those were sent to all of them for their review and asks respectively to submit individual comments to me. I sent it to Laura for review before it got presented to the board and she made one slight adjustment based on the fact that in the conditional resolution, it included the lease agreement date. And I wanted to make sure that the addendum was also included as well. So. One that I originally submitted to the board was resolution authorizing the airport authority to construct a new T hangar at the John County Airport Authority.
Just the new T and C's place.
They're not in there. This is the original.
Oh, this is the simple one.
This is the simple one that Commissioner Spitaleri asked me to read.
Could you slow down a little, please?
Yes.
Don't talk to her stuff.
Resolution authorizing the airport authority to construct a new T hangar at the John County Airport into a proven appropriation of eight hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the airport construction fund for the purpose of contributing towards the construction and improvements at the airport in accordance with O R C three oh eight point one seven. For John County Board of Commissioners and for the John County Airport Authority in resolution nine two one oh five in accordance with Ohio revised code section three oh eight point oh three. O R C section three oh eight point one seven permits a board of county commissioners of accounting included within a regional airport authority to appropriate monies from the general fund of the county if permitted in the resolution creating the airport authority. Resolution nine two one oh five provided in part that the board of county commissioners may, in their discretion, provide financial support to the John County Airport Authority. Whereas the John County Board of Commissioners approves an appropriation of eight hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the airport construction fund that in addition to five hundred eighty-six thousand dollars of FAA infrastructure grants will fund the construction of a new T hangar and improvements at the John County Airport. Whereas the airport authority is authorized following the construction of the new T hangar to utilize remaining funds from the eight hundred thousand dollar appropriation and hangar lease revenue towards other improvements at the airport. Now therefore be resolved that the John County Board of Commissioners authorize the airport authority to construct a new T hangar at the John County Airport and approve an appropriation of eight hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the airport construction fund for the purpose of contributing towards the construction and improvement at the airport in accordance with O R C three oh eight point one seven. So it took your motion from session
Right.
last week, those two resolutions together to create the simple resolution then to the board.
So can I make a, a motion on that, move on that second resolution?
I'll make a motion to amend Mr. Spitaleri's motion to include the revised resolution.
We have two motions on the floor.
Uh, but. Well, we have to, we have to vote on whether we'll revise Mr. Spitaleri's motion first. And then we would vote on uh, either the amended motion or the revised motion. So is there, you have to ask for a second to revise, uh, my motion? Or to revise a second for my motion to revise Mr. Spitaleri's motion.
I, I think I'd like to discuss a little bit before we go any further. Uh, there's a motion on the table, Jim.
So right now we can, uh, we can discuss whether we should, we should revise Commissioner Spitaleri's motion. That's, that's what we can discuss.
I second that.
Clarifying for me what you mean by that.
Okay, so the motion was to, uh, Mr. Spitaleri's motion was to approve the simple resolution for funding. My motion is to, to revise, to amend his motion to, instead of doing the simple resolution, to do, uh, the, the motion that protects the taxpayer. So that's my motion. Get my, I'm revising his motion, essentially amending his motion.
So we have to move on.
So we.
Your resolution first.
Yeah, so we would need a second on that. And then we would need to vote on whether the motion is amended or not. And then we would have to actually vote on the motion itself, the meat of the motion.
I would, just to keep this moving along. I second your motion. To, to.
To revise.
To revise.
To revive, to revise.
For amendment.
The option to amend it to be the conditioned resolution. Okay.
No discussion.
Okay, yes, correct.
I, I read everything real quick yesterday and I didn't realize that it was about compensation. I, I think most of the, uh, checks and balances are doable. The quarterly report, different things like that. I, I trust you guys that there is gonna be a T hangar built. Trust you guys for years and years about handling the money. That's, that's great. But I, I think that, uh, the hangup was with the compensation that you guys run the day-to-day airport, just like the fair board runs their, the fair grounds, the day-to-day operation. And, um, would you be, would you guys be okay with just all the conditions except the compensation?
We need to read the new one.
Could you, could you repeat those?
Yeah, we need to, we need to read this.
No, the compensation is a clear overreach of, of our duties and your duties with volunteers that manage this enterprise.
But you agree you gave your airport manager a fifty-one percent raise for the process of.
That's a misrepresentation. We brought him, him in exceptionally low in terms of his hourly wage. We quickly recognized the value that he added to the airport and to the community. It was rather unanimous in terms of all the tenants. Um, and we approved a reasonable raise for a part-time worker. You know, we made a mistake that we brought him in too low. It was our mistake. We, we fixed that.
And just like we've done in different departments or try to get the value of, you know, the wages to match the value of that person in any department that we have. So go ahead and continue with the, uh, all the conditions.
So number one, it says the authority shall provide quarterly reporting to the commissioners for three years following completion of the T hangar, including copies of leases and other relevant documents, occupancy rates, rental income and operational costs.
Yeah, we can do that.
Number two, the authority affirms that it has complied and will continue to comply with all the terms of the agreement. So that would be the lease agreement and the first amendment.
First amendment being, I'm sorry.
It was the, that was the amendment that was done for the lease agreement that was approved December twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two to the airport lease agreement. Number three is the authority shall not authorize any salary increase for authority staff that exceeds the annual percentage increase authorized by the commissioners unless explicitly approved by the commissioners. So that is the one that is the, appears to be the sticking point at this point. Number four, these funds shall become a loan with a twenty-year term at an interest rate of two percent compounded annually. If any of these conditions are violated, determination of non-compliance shall rest with the commissioners in its sole reasonable discretion based on documentation provided by the authority or other relevant evidence.
That's too open-ended. Because as we talked about, is if we have money left over, we can use it to fix roofs, fix doors. It says nothing about that. It just says it's a loan.
No, it says if you don't comply by the terms, then it becomes a loan.
Right, but that's, that is, that issue has never been discussed before. That's, that's brand new to this morning.
Well, what do you think the, that the issue should be if you do not comply with these terms? What do you think?
But we have to put in a contract request. We have to put a pay request to the county commissioner's office to, to receive the funds to pay our contractors. You have control to say yes or no. Isn't that.
Adrian, doesn't it move to their thing or are we paying the bills?
Um, the, uh, the thought pattern initially was in order to simplify the process, once the project was underway, we would do an encumbrance and expenditure for the full eight hundred thousand dollars and just transfer that to them.
Yes.
And let them manage.
Okay. That's a little different.
Because you've already gone out to bid and you received your bids.
Yes.
And so contractually, it would be your contract.
Okay.
It would not be the county.
Okay.
So therefore this is a fail-safe basically to
But it's.
ensure that the project is moving along.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
Fail-safe may not be the word to use. So you're, you're handling the project and you're handling the payment, just like what the fairgrounds is doing.
Right.
Correct. So it would just be.
But it, but it goes to.
For example, would you audit the fairgrounds to make sure that they're spending the money correctly?
I wasn't involved in that. I would have had a different resolution. So I mean.
The difference with the.
Who's getting audited? Yeah, we'd love to be audited. I mean.
One more difference with the. The agricultural society in accordance with the O R C is required now to provide a bond to the auditor's office in twice the amount of what the project cost is. So they have filed and approved bond with the auditor's office for one and a half million dollars. For the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars that the commissioners.
To ensure that they.
To ensure that the expenditure is done and handled correctly. Shouldn't that project? What do you mean?
How would they guarantee that bond?
I don't own anything. I'm an insurance company. Yeah, they don't own anything. That's wild.
So we're using county money to write a bond against ourselves?
No, the agricultural society has their own funding.
Okay, we're a county function.
I guess my, my concern there is, is it sounds very subjective as to meeting the terms of the agreement. But it, you know, as far as spending the funding.
Well, we're learning a lot today because Adrian just explained how the process with the dollars.
Right, but if we don't spend eight hundred thousand dollars into your satisfaction, suddenly we have a loan we have to pay back.
Well, just long as they follow the conditions of the quarterly reports and whatever.
I understand, I understand.
Specific to those, nothing else? Cause you said sole discretion of the.
Right.
Of the commissioners. Do we, do we say no on a whim or who defends us if you decide to pull the funding?
Well, we won't pull the funding on this project.
That's what you said in, in December, Jim.
We're, we're too far down for this.
Okay, Christie, I'm sorry. What's, we have more?
There's one. Sorry. Five, in the event of material misrepresentation, misuse of funds, fraud or any other indicia of non-compliance as determined by the commissioners in their sole discretion, the commissioners may require immediate repayment of all funds dispersed under this resolution with interest occurring from data disclosure.
That's some choice of words there that have been brought up before at county commissioners meetings, especially the word fraud. Is, does somebody have grounds to accuse us of that or to bring that term up? Being an attorney, you want to know what that means.
It's a standard boilerplate.
But it's been mentioned in staff, in, in chambers where fraud was brought up.
Who brought up fraud?
You did.
You did.
Wait, how did I bring it up?
I have no idea, but you used the word. Use the word in during.
Impressed fraud.
How did I imply fraud?
It's exactly, you stated it right from where you're sitting.
Right.
At in session, I said.
You did, you did.
What it was for.
So how did I, how did I say that?
Use the word. That's, that's enough.
Okay.
You used the word.
Regarding what, the airport?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And that, that's, I mean, again, we're, we're trying to do a good job here.
Potential conflicts of interest. I don't, I think there's some self-dealing going on. I don't, I don't necessarily think there's.
Are you throwing accusations without any background?
I mean, I'm, I think there's self-dealing because, you know, some of your board members own planes at the airport and you set the rate for those hangar spaces. And then you tell me you have a list of thirty-two people and I say you should increase the rates and you say no, and you've got your own board members that's filled with hanging. So I mean, to me, that's like, that's self-dealing.
Okay, when we set rates for hangers, we don't vote if we have an airplane.
Okay, but I mean, you still set a board. You're sitting next to your.
We complain about this enterprise, we would not compromise the county one outs. And you're, you're using the word now self-dealing. You're using the words fraud. Why is that necessary?
I mean, I don't recall using the words fraud. I'm using the words here because this is like standard way to talk.
We don't need to be standard, do we? We don't, we don't need that there.
No, you don't, you don't want anything. You want, it's very clear. You want no strings attached to this money. You want to spend it however you, you, you want to. And you're treating like this board's role as some sort of nuisance for you. And it's not. We have a duty to the taxpayers and the people of this county, and it's not a nuisance. It's my duty. A less and.
Let's try to get through this. Is there anything else? Is that the last?
That was always in there.
Okay. I, I think we can work with everything but the compensation. What do you guys think?
Still troubled by the wording on the last terms and conditions.
I mean, that's really.
Where do we plan on fully complying with quarterly reports or whatever you wish? That's, that's really straightforward. But are you, are you commissioners comfortable with those terms and conditions that last?
Well, there's a motion on the floor to approve them. So that's when they'll let you know if they're comfortable with it or not when they vote.
Okay.
So currently, the, the first thought that had to be taken would be to, um, approve the amended motion from Commissioner Spitaleri to, um, be the condition.
I think we have, first we have to vote whether to amend the.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so it's not, it's not approving it, yes.
To approve the simple resolution. And then there was a motion made by Commissioner Brakey to amend the, provide, to revise, amend, to revise Commissioner Spitaleri's motion to be the condition resolution. And that was seconded by Commissioner DeWarack.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Spitaleri?
So, so clarify what, what I'm voting on.
You are approving to amend your original resolution to be the condition resolution.
No.
Commissioner Brakey.
Yes.
Commissioner DeWarack.
If we scratch the, uh, compensation section.
That's another amendment.
Yes, that's correct.
Overamending her motion if you're changing what you're voting on.
Well, at this time I like to amend the motion.
We've got a motion in progress. You gotta vote. So just vote no at this point?
I vote no at this point.
If that's how you feel.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
So now I make a motion.
Well, but his motion's on the floor then, unamended.
It died. There was no second by Commissioner Spitaleri's motion to approve the simple resolution. There was a motion made by Commissioner Brakey to amend the, to revise the motion to be the condition resolution, seconded by Commissioner DeWarack. Mr. Spitaleri and Commissioner DeWarack voted no, Commissioner Brakey voting yes. So right now there is.
We're square one.
We are back to square one. So it would be to start over with a fresh.
I make a motion for the, uh, conditional, uh, resolution, scratching the compensation, which is item number three. I wrote it down. And that's my motion to approve it that way by eliminating item number three on the compensation.
I'll second that. Um, and I'll ask you gentlemen, what are you planning to, uh, grant as salary increases this year?
Yeah, we did. So it was four percent was the item increase. We did that, you know, January.
It's been a lot within the last month or so.
Yeah, okay.
That's amazing. That's exactly what the planning commission gave our new direct, our director, not new, but Linda Crumbi was four percent.
Yeah, I mean, that's within a six range.
We, we have a compensation committee. We have formal reviews for, for the airport manager. Um, those are approved by the board. Uh, we deliver the message and we deliver the results, which is the four percent increase.
Okay. Motion made.
I'll call the question. Okay. Commissioner Spitaleri?
So I'm not voting, uh, no to not support the airport. I'm voting no based on all of the, uh, that, that resolution. But I think that it should have been pretty much straightforward like we had spoke last in twenty twenty-four. So my vote is no.
Commissioner Brakey?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWarack?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to.
So number three is the authority shall. Do you guys have a printed copy of that?
Christie does.
Okay, something we're gonna give it to so you can see what the.
I, I mean, we can, I'm sure she can email it.
Yes, I, so, um, this is the resolution that was presented this prepared. So I have removed, I am crossing out number three. The removal motion that is approved. Um, so that will be, we're removing that section and I'm going to ask that the board initial that change.
Maybe we see that just briefly.
Sure. I'm going to do the same thing on the other two counties. This is the one that I was reading off of. So this is just removing number three as the board just regarding salary increase.
Yep. Can you review what was voted on and what was approved, please, so we know here and back here? Where, did you approve eight hundred thousand dollars for the year?
Yes.
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 So the resolution was approved by a two to one vote with the removal of the number three condition, um, which was regarding the salary increase. But it did provide the eight hundred thousand dollars on funding.
And that will be going into your construction account and you would be managing that. The bills would not be being paid from. So then we'll arrange those quarterly meetings so you'll be able to come and present to the board what you're doing and I can work with you on that.
Thank you.
Okay, so for clarification, Rob, on this section here, when you do your initials, put no next to it. And then your vote is included on the resolution.
Okay.
So you will sign it and then put your vote up for you.
While they're, while they're doing that, we did take it yesterday. They were slightly under our estimate. We are working on the grant application at this moment. As soon as we have it done from our consultants, it will be delivered to county commissioner's office. And we will need, we don't need approval or review, we just need acknowledgement.
Well, you do need to ask our permission for it.
You are getting a request today while we're here. Be on session next Tuesday.
Okay, so and you'll ask us.
We don't need permission, we just need an acknowledgement.
No, you do need permission per the terms of our agreement, sir.
The F A requires your acknowledgement.
No, the agreement you signed with the commissioner is requires you to ask for permission before you apply.
We're going to ask for permission next Tuesday.
Thank you.
To get the grant approved because if it's not done next Tuesday, we will lose money for county facility.
Okay, we move on?
Thank you. You need us to acknowledge that?
No, this is just a resolution. You don't sign this.
Christie, didn't you say we'd initial?
No, they have to initial.
We have three original copies.
Okay.
And then when it goes into the actual journal, that will be lined out as you are seeing it. When it goes into there, so that it was removed.
We would respect.
You will receive a signed copy. That's why there was three P's on today.
We would respectfully ask that terms and words be used for us. You be careful what you say about us. Again, we're going to volunteers. You use the word fraud attacks us personally?
I don't recall using that. I'm, I, I don't know how, what context I used it in and you can't tell me that. So I don't know. I don't know what I said, but I mean, I, I have concerns about how.
If you have proof, then show it to us and we'll take care of it. But until that time, please don't use words like that.
Give me the quote.
You said it.
That's already forth needed documented.
About one, one hour and forty-five minutes into the meeting, that's, I mean, you said it.
What did I say?
We did.
Watch, watch the video.
Yes.
Guys, we got your mind.
You guys, sit down.
You're bigger than that, wasn't it?
I understand.
But thanks, thanks for.
I apologize. It was kind of hell of a shelter here today. I didn't even see it myself before we got here, so. But I'll be working with you guys and we'll, we'll work to, to follow all the requirements of the agreement and get you guys going, okay?
Item number twenty-six.
Yes. I appreciate that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Kathy Hostler, I work for you, commissioner's office, and I'm here about public service recognition week. We do this annually. We asked for this approval. This has been going on since May of nineteen eighty-five nationally. We're recognized, so we're asking you to.
We're trying to have a meeting here. So, Mrs. Jones, if you have questions for these gentlemen, can you take it out in the hallway?
She can't hear you.
Somebody tackle her.
Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
Or go to the hallway. You thought you're not here.
Go ahead.
Are we doing this again? Okay, I'm asking for approval for public service recognition week. It's from, it's the first full week in May every year. Been going on since nineteen eighty-five. It's a good week. We, nationally, we are looked at public service in recognition for that. It's May fourth through May tenth. And asking you to approve this resolution for this year.
And is this the amended one I sent? Okay, great. I'll make a motion to approve.
So just. Commissioner Spitalary.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you for your service.
Item twenty-seven, the commissioner's office is requesting the board approve a merit increase for Deborah Ashburn, senior fiscal specialist, to the rate of twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cents per hour, grade twelve, step four, to be effective April thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty-seven.
Second.
Commissioner Spitalary.
I.
Yes.
Item number twenty-eight, the commissioner's office is requesting the board amend the motion from March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five to revise the start date to read approve hiring and appointment of Amy B. Van to the position of county administrator, number one, three, zero, one, to be effective May fifth at the rate of sixty dollars and forty-six cents per hour, grade E nineteen, step nine.
And just to clarify, that's just pushing back her start time.
Just pushing.
And you're okay with that, right, Linda?
Yes.
I mean, that's a lot of options. I'll make a motion to approve twenty-eight.
Second.
Commissioner Spitalary.
All right.
I.
Yes.
We're at the board discussion, position now on the agenda and I received a request from one of the commissioners to have an open discussion about how we're feeling about the changes that were made to public comment at the beginning of the year, using a timed approach and making people stop speaking and I just want to hear from you how you feel like that's going. Do you want to make any adjustments? Are you happy with it? You want to do it in a different way?
I want to get rid of that clock because it's real annoying to listen to over here.
Stop talking. I mean, we need to have some sort of cutoff point though, because I mean, we need to, this means, like, this is a long meeting. So we, I mean, I do think we need to have a time limit. The way we did in the Board of Health, this isn't going to work for you, Linda, but we'd have, somebody would have an iPad and then it would project to the screen behind so you could see as it was going down.
Don't want us to attempt to set something like that up because we can't.
Yeah, I mean, there, there might be a way to have a more digital solution where people can see that their time is, is running up as well.
One of these screens that are behind us so the audience can see.
You'd have to get the marking first. Be the problem.
Well, I can turn it on.
If possible.
Basically.
Brain flaps back there.
A visible solution. Are you sure that two minutes is enough? Do you want?
I think that two minutes is enough for, for a good discussion.
Do you want to amend the policy? Do you want to make a, a suggestion as to what you think would be a better amount of time?
Well, I'm comfortable with three minutes max.
And you want a visible?
Visible.
Where people can see their time?
Yes.
Okay.
And then when they see two fifty-eight, they go, and in closing, and then they vote it out, you know?
And then they stop.
We probably need a motion to amend the policy.
Well, I just want to make sure too that you are also in agreement about the public comment period not exceeding twenty minutes unless made by a motion to extend. We've come close to, we've actually exceeded that at one of the meetings. So I just want to make sure that that twenty-minute time period is still sufficient for you before you decide to make an amendment to the.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I still think that's a good one because we, we can still vote to extend, but I mean, we do need to conduct business in an efficient manner. And so I think we need to have some guardrails on our public comment. I'm fine with the, the three minutes, but maybe what we can do is amend the policy and then put that on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
That'll give me some time to work with people who are less like a Neanderthal than me and.
I find it was less than.
We'll find a solution.
I mean, I like your little clock, but I don't hear the ticking over here, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Yes.
No.
Anything else, Linda?
I have nothing further because.
Well, the other item on general discussion that I wanted to do was just a couple of things. I've had a couple of questions regarding the, the videos being on A D P's web YouTube page. I think that, you know, we need to have our own.
Yes, so. Do you know the backstory with that?
No.
Okay, so apparently Dave Lair set up the commissioner's YouTube page and I reached out to him and tried to get control of that in some ways, get the credentials. And he didn't seem to have that anymore. So that's why they've been going to A D P's.
Right, because I think that we got to figure out how to, how to get that changed because people have asked us that. And then just as far as the other question I've had, some, some of the people attending these meetings is, you know, what kind of a cost are we, we running into with, you know, the filming of these, these videos? I see, you know, from the A D P board back there, there's like one, two, three people for the, for, for a video. And I don't, you know, I guess, you know, the question has come up is, what's the per-hour rate that we're running to be running a video compared to, we've got a camera here. And I think you've, you've even mentioned that, that we've got, this was put in place so that we don't have to have a payroll of three people for multiple hours to pay for video.
It's my understanding that these cameras were put in specifically to allow for live streaming. But there may be some missing software because at the time that this building was built, you guys did not want to do that. And I don't know where you are on that. Do you want to speak to that, Frank? I know you guys were kind of working on trying to smooth things out with that. How is that coming?
We are still working through that process. We were able to get some specific press drone techs on site and did determine that there is actually missing hardware that was never installed to livestream with the cameras up there. We determined the configuration wasn't done correctly to do that. And we're looking at rebuilding some of the infrastructure here.
Okay, and based on the email you've sent today indicating that you need to pivot towards support for board of elections as your highest priority, we probably can't expect to have any motion on that until probably early summer.
So when I had discussed this at the beginning of your report, I believe I had said that we'd have a solution placed by July. We're on that timeframe still understood. We have the temporary solution placed until that point and then we will have that solution hopefully in place of everyone.
Thank you. Did you have any more questions about that?
Just, just basically, you know, the question has come up multiple times from different people of what, you know, what is it costing us to, to be filming these, these meetings? I don't know, I mean.
I don't know that we've been billed for it in any sense.
I, I understand that, but it's, if there's, there, there, there's people here, they're probably not doing other things that they would be normally doing, right?
Correct.
So then I'm just seeing is, is how, what, what is it costing us? And that's, you know, just a simple question. I don't know if, if, you know, A D P knows what that's, that number is, if, if we looked at it of how much time it's taken to do this? Or not? No answer.
Is that a question to me?
Yeah, well, to whoever, to, to, to.
Yeah, so.
Wants to answer it, I guess.
I mean, I was here because I was out on the agenda today. We have an intern student who's learning how to do the process with someone training him. I manage my people and our organization and we believe that with the public engagement we've been getting on YouTube here, at least a hundred and fifty to two hundred views per week. We're providing a good quality product that gives the public the opportunity to engage the V O C C and I don't hear positives about it. Seems like it's a thing you shouldn't be doing.
And I think that, you know, just listening to the employees, I think that the majority of that, that viewership is probably employees of this county that are really watching this. And I think that we had that conversation, Linda, that you've heard it from so many people that.
I'm aware there are a lot of employees that are enjoying actually being able to see the streaming because that lets them know what's going on.
Right, and, and I, you know, so it's just, I guess, you know, I look at it in two ways and that, you know, is it taking a lot of our other, you know, time away? I'm hoping that, you know, in some of these departments, it's not a situation that's basically taking a two and, two or three hour period a day on Tuesdays, employees working to sit there and watch videos.
I, I suspect people are not just sitting there and not working and looking at their video. I think they're working and they're doing other stuff and they have in the background. I mean, people, some people listen to a podcast and they work. Some people listen to music. Christie likes to listen to the police scanners. She works.
Just one voice for me, sorry.
So I, I, I suspect people have it in the background if they have something interesting, you know, maybe their department's on the agenda. They want to see how that goes, but.
Right. So, you know, with a hundred and fifty views, I don't think that we're, you know, going to be at the YouTube's top, top one hundred channels, but maybe we'll get there one day. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, I think that we need to try to, as a board, put together a letter of support for retaining the C E I office that's in Middlefield that we're in the process of losing to, that they were consolidating that to Concord Township. I think that that's a big loss for Georgia County based on the fact that, you know, where it's, where it's headquartered right now is in Middlefield, next to where the tractor supply would be there, Giant Eagle, and their ability to respond, you know, to Georgia County is, 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 is very much, you know, a big thing where we would then be dependent upon Concord Township in Lake County to be, you know, getting the services and dispatching trucks out of there to come to Georgia County. So, you know, just the amount of time of travel, you know, if they had to go from, you know, from Middlefield to say Bainbridge or Middlefield to Chesterland or, you know, wherever they're, they're located at, you know, in that area and with Middlefield with the amount of, you know, factories that are there also that, you know, would require, you know, some, some, you know, ability of getting some attention fast. And I know that there have been some situations in the past with their response time is really, really good. That we would lose that if, I, I, I feel that our response time would go down if we're looking at that over into Concord Township. So I'd ask the board if we can, you know, to generate a letter and, and I know that we have a new representative now that, that is replacing Dean and that if we could get him a, a letter of support that he could possibly run up the chain to say, we would like to have, you know, C E I construction crews and line people to stay, you know, in Georgia County because it's, it's a small, it's a small unit, but they're very effective and they do, they do, they do good work. And, and I think that it's a big thing for our county not to, to have to, you know, lose that, you know.
If I can draft something.
And they definitely have linemen and so forth at that, at Middlefields because I know, I mean.
No, they have a full, that, I want to say there's either four or five, four or five people and they handle all the servicing and they handle all the emergency callouts and and then they do also, you know, some of the tree work, the basic tree work that they need to do. You know, I actually had a, I, I made a, made a point to go and actually talk to them and, you know, just to, to understand some of the stuff that they do do for the county in Georgia. And I think it's a big loss. But I think that, you know, we, you know, it's, it's such a small number of people and the cost of where they're located is not a huge cost for them to maintain. But I, I just think that it would be great if we could, if we could keep them in the county and, you know, they're, they haven't gone yet, but if there's a possibility that they could stay, I think that we, we, we really, we would, we would really like to keep them here if possible.
Would you guys like me to draft a letter for you to consider for sending?
Sure, yeah, I'd like to hear more about the situation. I mean, I know.
Guys, see what the story is.
Yeah.
And, and maybe have the, have, I believe his name is Dave now.
Dave Con.
Yeah, he was our original, or not original, but second, second round representative when I came here. But if we can, maybe we could even see to reach out to him to come to the next meeting to talk and, and then, you know, we could, we could, we could just kind of get the gist of it, but it's, I think it's a big, I think it's a big advantage for us to have them stay here in Georgia County and I really, it's, it's sad to see that they're, I understand in business that they, there's.
Yeah, they're, they're hitting some hard times right now. So I'm, that doesn't surprise me, but I, I understand what you're saying. It's a lost.
Yeah. You know, and, and when you got to look at it too, is, is the economic impact is when one of these companies, you know, a, a large, you know, large factory goes down and, and they're waiting for service, what is the, what is the real, you know, rundown, roll down cost of, of them not being able to be up and running, you know? So that's, that's, yeah, it does. Any other thing too is, is, you know, they're so close to the hospital to, you know, God forbid we lost power there, needed attention there. I mean, there's so many advantages for us to have our own people here in the county. And it's just, I think that maybe we could ask, you know, some other questions of what the actual, you know, economic cost is, of what, what it costs to have them in Georgia. And you'll probably see that it's not an incredible big number that what the, what the end. That it's not an incredible big number that what the what the end goal far exceeds what the what the costs are.
Okay.
So.
I'll see what I can do for that. Um.
Ralph, you're exactly right. I I've had fieldings of calls from residents, Dr. Dave Conley, the new uh. Outreach person. And uh, I put it to him like this, it says, we would probably put a letter together. Uh, maybe in conjunction with Emergency Management Services Roger Peterson. And I says, if you could do a study on if something happened in Parkland, how long would would it take from uh, your workstation from Concord to Parkland? And so on and so forth, and then everybody can remember that last storm when trees are out all over the place, these guys just took off from. From Middlefield, and they were there on the spot sooner, much sooner than if they had to take off from from Concord. So if you could start a letter and maybe get get the thoughts uh, and processes from Roger Peterson, Emergency Management Services. And combine that together, uh, I think that'd be very helpful.
Okay.
You know, and then the other part of it too is is that, you know, you you take the situation like what what you just were saying with that storm. Is where does the priority then to Geoghan County come in?
It's, well, it's low already.
Well, last on the list.
Yeah, no, and and they're going to always target high density areas overload us.
Right.
That's that's just how.
And that, that's why I feel like we've kind of got a, we've kind of got a a huge benefit by having our own, our own crews, crew of people here and. Um, I just, I would hate to see us lose that. It just, it would be a big uh, it would be a big loss.
Okay.
Start working on it, Linda.
I will.
That'd be great.
Yes, sir.
Right, um, and the others? Yes. Now we're in the public comment uh, section. Everybody gets uh, two minutes. You ran over a couple of weeks ago. You're like, you're gonna be a year and a half.
Until we get something better, we're stuck with this, sorry.
I can put on my phone if you want.
Okay.
You have a ringer on this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Listen, guys. All right.
She's a thoroughly modern woman.
I'm a millennium. I know how to do this. All right, let's go. I'm ready to go.
Go ahead.
Uh, airport stuff, obviously. And this was the three and a half weeks going on May 20th, important word in in my mind and on this article for the headline and the word clash. And I think as we see, I think we've seen demonstrated here today, there is a clash. When you you step in, try to figure out where where the problem is with that, and I believe it's communication. There's a lack of communication, coordination. Follow up, any number of things like that between the board and the airport authority. I've reached out to the commissioners as much as I could. I reached out to the airport authority. And I'll tell you, I think we have some very intelligent and dedicated people on the board. We certainly have some dedicated, intelligent people at the airport board. Outstanding in my mind, work that they have done to keep that airport going on a volunteer basis. There's no question in my mind about it. They need all the support they can get. There's also a responsibility they have to be physically attentive to your needs as a. Second thing that's important is the other last Thursday, I had dinner with a neighbor. And I heard the phrase, rich kids playground, referring to the airport. I think we've all heard that at one corner or another. Let me, let me give you another example, um. How much more than anything like that it is. It is a a a, an environment where kids. Or an adult can get into the aviation industry, and I'm here to tell them I'm a fortunate child for that. I was an inner city kid living with without two cars, when you're twelve years old, during the Civil Air Patrol. I walked to downtown to Berkeley from airport to do that. And and I ended up at a smaller airport, much like Geoghan. Worked there, pumped gas, did everything, got my license, ended up instructing there, going to airport, come back. And made a career out of out of aviation. The airport is very, very important to us.
Thank you. State your name and where you live.
Uh, my name is Patty Fulp, and my address is one, four, ninety-nine, four South State Avenue in Middlefield. And first, I do want to commend you today on finally making a contribution, an investment in our county airport. It will go a long way to help making this airport more self-sufficient. Um, that same article that the gentleman was referring to didn't push a couple of buttons with me in the area of something that was said. Um, in the paper goes to all the Geoghan County residents that says that the airport does in fact collect. All of the rentals, the fuel sales, and the landing fees. Yet, the article went on to say that it seemingly was that the commissioners pay all the bills. I'm hard pressed to see where the commissioners pay any bills, and Ms. Brannan, maybe you can um. Attest to the number of times things come in monthly, the bills that need to be paid for the airport. I've been involved in the airport's uh, budget process previously. The airport board that you have here is extremely responsible, financially responsible. They take their projected operating income. They take their projected operating expenses, and they balance that to the budget, and they do not need to ask for money for operational. Um, expenses. They do, however, and I think this is any place that provides um, infrastructure to the county. They need to ask for funds, yes, to grant match, which is something you have contractually agreed to do. But also to make investments into the airport and to um, economically provide financial support for the airport. And and that's where I think we're a little bit lacking here, but I would love to see both the May believe and the responsible parties here. For making those comments to reverse that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Uh, Mary Heisman, leading women voters, I just wanted to say that um. I've had a lot of positive feedback on the Live Feed. And we use it a lot, and we also include all of the views in our weekly reports. And it's not just from the lead members, but also from some residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for listening, so.
Howard, South Russell Village, back in December, they gave two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, commissioners did, for the dog pound. Has the money been sent to the dog pound yet? Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
No, it is not.
When is it going to be sent?
When the plans are ready, and he's been working on the plans with the with the uh, maintenance director. And um, they're looking at some engineering about that, but that is moving forward.
Will be this year.
Probably.
When you probably.
It depends on how long it takes to make the plan and and make sure the board is okay with it.
The way it sounds, it's almost like it's the airport problem. The airport problem is important. The dog pound is important, so it's about time that we pace up to things that are important and handle it. Uh, I'll check with Adrian, I have one of the two hundred and fifty thousand bucks being sent.
It was kind of a surprise to the dog warden when that motion was made. So there were no, there were no plans already in place.
Okay.
To utilize that money, so what he, what is the process is right now, he's coming up with a plan on how best to utilize. That money to make the biggest impact.
Okay.
On the dog pound, so, yeah.
They, they're one group of people.
Yeah, and I've been, Matt's been coming into the office regularly, and we've been having discussions and talking about, so it's not, it's not going by the wayside, not getting forgotten about.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We've had more communication with the dog warden than better than ever before. And with that dog shelter, uh, we're going to treat it like. My thoughts, we're going to treat it like any other building that the county owns, which is owned by the taxpayers, that we evaluate it first. That is a pole barn structure. And sometimes the pole barn, the poles rot at the ground level. So we're going to investigate everything on that building to either repair or add on or or whatever, so it has to be really analyzed, so we're spending the money wisely. We're just not going to hand somebody dollars and say.
So as long as, as long as the money is there, but why is the paperwork done?
Yes, 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 the word.
That was the problem with the airport, the paperwork was a little busy, and then there was a big concern about it. We'd rather not have the dog warden go through the same problem that the airport had to take care of.
Yeah, and not to get into the weeds, but those were very different motions. I mean, the motion for the dog warden was just two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the dog work. To to improve the shelter versus the airport motion was, when that motion was made, it was dependent on an agreement being approved. So the agreement was never approved, and then the motion was rescinded. So those are, just so, I mean, that's kind of getting into the weeds, but those are two different motions, and that's why they have been two different processes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My question for commissioners, why are you concerned about the cost of streaming? But you don't seem to be concerned about the equipment that doesn't work in the room, and I do know that's been brought up in this meeting. Not just this meeting, but multiple meetings.
No, I I'm bringing it up because people have been asking me about just the 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 amount of people that they see here. That are handling a movie, you know, to 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 manage a movie camera to do this. And I think that that's why I brought it up, is is I've heard it from multiple people. That have a concern of how much is it costing us to have all these people. Sitting here to 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 monitor a camera to take a video of this meeting. And, you know, as far as why we're not focusing on this equipment. Um, I think that that might be a better question, you know, for ADP to find out, you know, what is the next step to getting this done? It sounds like they're in the process of working on a a a process to get some kind of hardware that's. That they're that they're waiting on, and I, you know, and I hope that 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 does then correct the problem, and it makes it that much more efficient.
Does anyone know how much that might cost to fix the room, and how much did the room originally cost to have it fitted in that thing?
Oh, my gosh. Um, I would say how much it's going to cost, that would be something that ADP will let us know when the time comes. Obviously, they're not done with their, whatever they're trying to do to make it work. As far as what it costs. When the, I guess, when the building was built, I would not have that number off the top of my head. I'd have to go looking for it.
Right, in my position too, it'd be is is if there's a piece that's missing, that was, we were supposed to be. Getting with that, then we need to look into that. If there's, if there's hardware that, um, you know. And, you know, and I, once again, you know. We're not I T people, you know, like, we don't know what the hardware is, so as far as. That part of it, I I would say again, you know, ADP probably should have been sure in that. To the the hardware was put in according to what it was supposed to be, I guess, if they're ultimately the ones to look at the the hardware and and software, what's going on? I don't know.
Are you, are you talking about this this equipment here?
Right.
So my understanding was that this side step stepped ADP, and ADP didn't approve it. Frank, could you confirm that?
Correct. I believe the the technology was all part of the larger purchase, but in terms of having access to it, we never had access to it. And we were never responsible for checking the install or any of that stuff that was done separately. And then it was, I believe, inspected, signed off on by somebody other than my department. I had nothing to do with that.
So did the ADP board ever approve this equipment?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
In fairness to the company, it may not have been specified to make this stuff functional, because at that time, that board did not want to do live streaming. So they provided the equipment for some future use, which is a good look ahead. But they may not have expect all of the pieces for that because we had no intention of doing it at the time. I wasn't here. I'm just speculating. Um, but that seems like a logical explanation why there might be pieces missing.
I believe Ms. Brannan was correct. I believe they were instructed not to set up with the ability to live stream at that time. And then obviously that changed in January this year. Uh, most of the existing hardware will be usable for that. It's simply matter of figuring out. How to configure what's there and make it work within our system now. But Linda's correct on that.
Linda, are you able to get um, Anastasia the information regarding how much the system costs? Is that something we have a public record on?
I can try.
Okay.
We'll have to go through.
This, yeah, I mean, this.
It should be a line in one of the pay requests from Donnelly's. We should be able to see uh, a line item on their uh.
I think it was InfoTech that did that. He was.
Were they a sub of Donnelly's? Okay, there should, well.
You know who might be able to help me that is, with that is Jared, because he is N B five, and he's representing us in the courthouse, but he also. Was with this building, so let me start with him. He's on vacation right now. For ten days, so it might take me a little while, but I'll see what I can do. Thank you. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Chris Schloss, Board of, uh, County Airport Authority. I want to say thank you to the board and to all of your administration on your approval on the resolution for eight hundred thousand dollars. It's been a long time coming. It's been hard fought. Um, there were some hard feelings, and a lot of hard words have been said. But on behalf of all of us, I want to say thank you very much. It'll be well worthwhile and well spent and trustfully spent. Thank you again very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks.
Anybody else? I have no turn. Make a motion to adjourn.
Go look, babe.